I chose today a Baha'i prayer for meetings. Oh my God, oh my God. Barely these servants are turning to thee supplicating thy kingdom of mercy. Barely they are attracted by thy holiness and set aglow with the fire of thy love, seeking confirmation from thy wondrous kingdom and hoping for attainment in thy heavenly realm. Barely they long for the descent of thy bestowal, desiring illumination from the sun of reality. Oh Lord, make them radiant lamps, merciful signs, fruitful trees and shining stars. May they come forth in thy service and be connected with thee by the bonds and ties of thy love, longing for the lights of thy favor. Oh Lord, make them signs of guidance, standards of thine immortal kingdom, waves of the sea of thy mercy, mirrors of the light of thy majesty. Barely thou art the generous, barely thou art the merciful, barely thou art the precious, the beloved.
Amen. Thank you so much.
That's beautiful. Pledge of allegiance will be given by Don O'Born, U.S. Army retired.
Go to the horizon, any gentleman that has their hats on, you take it off. Put your place your hands over your heart, please, and repeat with me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and also thank you for your service.
We appreciate it.
At this time, we have a couple of special visitors. We have the Boy Scout Troop 1815 here, and I'd like to, I promised them that they'd be able to get on TV if they came in their uniforms, so I'd like to invite them up here real quick and just have them introduce themselves. So come on. So just come up here and speak into the mic and tell us what your name is and what rank you are. Go ahead.
This first one looks kind of like a troublemaker.
I see a resemblance there.
Go ahead, Nick.
Talking about him or me?
You're the only one that I know, Nick, so.
Uh, so I'm Nick and yeah, I'm Nick Renstrom, his son, and I'm a star?
A life.
A life, yeah.
Hello, I'm Wyatt Jackson and I'm a first class.
I'm Tanner John and I just got my star.
I'm Anthony Ernstum and I just got my first class.
I am Markham Jupson and I'm first class.
I'm Truman Leonard and I just got my star.
Thanks.
What badge are they working on?
Communication merit badge. They have to come to a public meeting here and see what we do here. All right, thanks, guys. And I'd like to thank my wife for bringing them too. There she is. Since I don't want to sleep on the couch tonight, no. All right. So the first item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expedite and re-routine matters which come before the commissioner for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve today's consent agenda. Consider, uh, consisting of consideration of auditor approved claims for payment for January 17th, 2018 through February 6th, 2018. Consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of January 16th, 2018, and work meeting minutes of January 16th and January 18th, 2018. Consideration of administrative adjustments on real and personal property and consideration of application for property tax abatements, of which there are five. Be my motion.
I second that motion.
Yeah, a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. First item is a presentation for outstanding services awarded to Sergeant Aaron Thompson of the Washington County Sheriff's Office and Sergeant Thompson, we'd like you to have come forward here. Our Sheriff Corey Pulcifer and Deputy Nate Brooks, would you like to explain why he's receiving this?
I'm going to turn the mic over to him because I can't talk.
Okay, sounds good.
Commissioners, thanks for having us. So as Commissioner Renstrom mentioned, we're here to do a very special employee recognition today for Sergeant Aaron Thompson. So just so you're aware, this incident had received national and international attention. We've received hundreds of emails from across the world. Sergeant Thompson has received, I don't know how many letters and thank yous and a lot of public comment in the media as well, too. It's all been positive for law enforcement across the nation and for Washington County. So I'll just read the letter verbatim here. It's a little lengthy. I tried to reduce it as much as I could and still cover the material. So on the evening of Christmas, uh, 2017, dispatch received a 911 call from an eight-year-old boy or of an eight-year-old boy that had drowned in New Harmony, Utah. Initial reports indicated the boy had fallen through the surface of an icy pond while chasing the family dog. The caller indicated the boy had gone under the ice and was no longer visible. Sergeant Thompson was on duty and initiated an emergency response to the boy's location approximately 20 miles away. Sergeant Thompson arrived on scene approximately 15 minutes following the initial report to dispatch. At this time, the boy was estimated to have been under the icy water for a minimum of 20 minutes. Immediately after arriving on scene, witnesses pointed to an area approximately 25 feet from the shoreline where the boy was last seen being, uh, before slipping under the ice. Sergeant Thompson, who had previously served as a member of Washington County Search and Rescue, was an experienced rescue diver and, uh, with training in icy water rescue. Sergeant Thompson made the personal decision to attempt a rescue of the boy despite the inherent risk to himself. He began using his fists and forearms to break the ice, creating a pathway to the child's location. Eventually, he made it to an area where the boy was last seen and dove to the bottom of the frigid pond, beginning a grid search for the boy. The helmets were beginning to take a significant toll on Sergeant Thompson, making it difficult to breathe. He knew his time in the water was limited and gave one final effort. He was able to see the boy's face under the surface of the adjacent water. He was able to grab the boy and swim back to the shoreline, bringing the child to awaiting paramedics. Medical personnel were able to revive the child's pulse and transport him to a local hospital with a low probability of survival. Sergeant Thompson was also taken to the hospital to be treated for cuts, lacerations to his forearms, chest and hands, along with symptoms related to hypothermia. Now, in what many are calling a Christmas miracle, the boy has made a full recovery. Sergeant Thompson has rejected any claims of heroism, attributing the rescue to a group of effort by citizens, dispatch, EMS and law enforcement. Although this is accurate to a certain degree, Sergeant Thompson's selfless act was no doubt the cornerstone of the boy's survival. There's the letter. And in the history of the sheriff's office, the sheriff and I were discussing this in his 30-plus years. Sergeant Thompson is getting the Medal of Valor. We have never awarded that. We do have life-saving awards where deputies will do CPR and save a life or a sheriff star where a deputy will put themselves at risk for another. This is a combination of putting yourself in imminent danger of, um, injury or death in the effort of a life-saving incident. So Sergeant Thompson is the first one to receive this Medal of Valor.
This is not the actual award. It's one that's very close to it. We're still waiting for the new one, but we're going to let you hang on to this one and kind of show it off a little bit until that other one comes. I just wanted to say how proud I am of you, Aaron. Say thank you.
We also, we just, as commissioners, we want to thank you also, and so we have an outstanding service award here that we'd like to present to you also at this time, and so if you come up. So Corey, our sheriff will call me sometimes, and I hate getting phone calls from him because either it's dealing with money or it's dealing with something bad's happened. And so I got this phone call saying, hey, one of our deputies went in after a child. And at that time, we didn't know how the child did. But it was interesting because he mentioned your name and I was like, that means a lot. And he says, if you knew him like I knew him, there was no doubt you were going to go in and after him. And so I've heard that from actually, apparently he grew up with Victor and Victor said the same thing. And everybody I've talked to, they were not surprised by your action that day. So thank you.
Yeah, I have to, me and Aaron go back to kindergarten. You know, that's the way our side of the county works over there and you know, I wasn't surprised at all. This is totally within his character and who he is and who I've known my whole life and just really proud of you. But not surprised. I'm proud of you and you would have done that for anybody.
Well, moving on to more dating issues, we'll go to item number two. We're going to have a public hearing to open the 2018 Washington County Budget to Update Fund 27 for Economic Development. And that's going to be by our clerk auditor, Kim Hafen.
He makes all that we do here pretty inconsequential when you think about that. So thank you very much, Sergeant, for your good work. We're opening the budget for 2018 to update Fund 27, which is economic development. That budget is passed by their board and we had asked to get that in time to include that in our regular budget approval, but we didn't receive that in time. So what we did was put in 2017's budget for 2018 as a placeholder until we received the budget that was approved by the Economic Development Board, and that's what we have in front of you today. It's not a change really to a budget. It's just that we didn't have it at the right time.
So this is a public hearing, so anybody from the public's welcome to come up and make any comments in regards to it. All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, oh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed, and we have to approve the amendment to the 2018 budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment to the 2018 budget.
And I'll second and clarify that this is expenses itemized $80,000 with revenues of $380,000, so it keeps everything in balance.
Thank you. I was trying to scroll down to get the right verbiage here, you know.
All right. So we have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Number three, consideration of purchase requests and ratification of purchase requests by Ray Boyer. I see we have quite a few.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, there are quite a few. Um, a lot of these purchase requests are what we call blanket POs and it's an estimation of the cost for the year. So when that's brought up, that's what that means. Anyway, the first one we have is for a new transit van for our Council on Aging, and the van is not quite finished. So the estimated cost at this time is $59,990 with an estimated portion coming from the Utah Department of Transportation in the amount of $47,992, which makes the Washington County estimated portion $11,998.
Can you do this on all of them?
Sure.
Get UDOT to pay.
Work on that. Um, the next one is for two, um, two more transit vehicles for the Council on Aging and, um, the total price on these two vans is $128,887.40 and UDOT is paying a portion of $103,199.92, which makes the Washington County portion $26,642.48. The next purchase requisition is for an assessment of the communities of Huracan and Leverkin, and that is a total of $25,000. The next one is for, um, online marketing for tourism, and that's a total of $66,550. The next one is for TV ads on the BYU Network in the total of $40,000. Next one is for Utah TV advertising and Colorado TV advertising in the amount of $180,000, sorry, $180,135. The next purchase requisition is for golf print and online ads for tourism in the total of $32,040. Next one is for editorial ads in the amount of $15,000. The next one is for Phoenix TV ads, March through November, in a total of $80,025. Next one is for digital ads and content for tourism in the amount of $10,000. This next one is for a 2018 Fox Sports TV feature resort package in the total of $15,000, and that's for tourism as well. Next one is for display ads, um, streaming video for tourism in total of $201,000. Next one is for online ads and YouTube ads in the total of $30,199. Next one is for digital ads and content for $10,000. And that's all of them for our tourism.
So I do have, we do have individuals from our tourism in the office. If you have any questions about some of these that came up, they're here if you have a specific request for them, because there is a lot.
There is a lot there and I just want everybody to know that these taxes aren't borne directly at these funds by property tax or anything like that. This is from transient room and restaurant tax funds. Mostly all transient room, I think, all of this.
Yep.
And it pays to promote our area, to bring guests and visitors in to keep us all working and employed. So it's actually a really great thing for Washington County. It is a lot of money.
All right. And the next set of purchase requisitions is for the Dixie Center. Um, the first one is to finish up, um, the HVAC conversion system, and that totals $50,406. The next one is to repair the waterfalls in the museum, and that's for $11,000. And the next set of purchase requisitions is for the roads and maintenance shop. Um, the first one is a blanket PO for rental equipment in a total of $10,000. Next one is, um, a blanket PO for equipment fuel in a total of $30,000. Next one is another blanket PO for equipment fuel in a total of $30,000. And the next set of purchase requisitions is for the sheriff's office. First one is a blanket PO for kitchens, kitchen supplies and food in a total of $180,000.
Who you feeding out there?
Uh, the next one is another blanket PO for, um, supplies in the total of $15,000. The next one is another blanket PO for kitchen supplies and food in the total of $30,000. And the next purchase requisition is another blanket PO for the sheriff's office in the kitchen, food and supplies for $10,000. Next one is another blanket PO for the kitchen, supplies and food in the total of $20,000. The next one is another blanket PO for prisoner commissary items in a total of $40,000. Next one is another blanket PO for supplies, and that totals $15,000. The next one is, um, for the sheriff's office again, and that is for some body armor in the total of $13,987.84. And the final one is a ratification from the last commission meeting for, uh, a bus that needed to purchase or we were not going to get the price for it, and that totaled $22,000. And that is all of them unless there's any questions.
James, would you come up and answer me a question?
Be hard?
No, not too hard. Uh, some of these blanket POs, for example, for the road department for fuel, it's pretty specific and I know exactly what it's going to be used on fuel for their machinery and constructing roads and things like that. But when it says supplies, I'm hoping for some reassurance and tell me what kind of supplies and some assurance as well that you'll still follow purchasing policy in terms of getting competitive bid when that's part of the county policy that.
Absolutely. The supplies that we're talking about in general go for the correctional facility we're talking about. Toilet paper, cleaning materials, supplies, all the stuff that you can think of that happens inside the facility. And we are always, um, checking bids against each other, competitors to make sure.
So you're still getting competitive prices on everything according to policy?
Absolutely.
Too bad we can't get TRT off of all of your guests out at that hotel you're running.
And by the way, we like the bus. It's working great.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming up. That wasn't too hard, was it? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase requests that have been outlined.
I'll second.
I have a motion is second to approve the purchase request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number four, consideration to, uh, update to the Washington County Employee Policy and Procedure Manual by our HR Director Jonathan Little.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, the change requested is before you is designed to bring our policy manual in line with what our practice has been. This was a gap that was noticed over the last little while that in the past, our practice has been that if a salaried employee separates from county employment, that any accrued personal time, which accrues different for them than it does for our hourly employees, would just be considered null and void. Uh, this was something that was not very clear in our policy manual. This simple addition to the sentence of, uh, clarifying that that is not paid out upon separation is meant to clarify that.
I'd make a motion in support of approving change to Section 6 Employment Status dealing with how PTOs deemed accrued and paid upon separation.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number five, consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2288, a resolution approving a work change request and proposed contract amount for the construction of the purgatory correctional facilities workers house, housing building. Um, so I'll take the lead on this one. Um, so we, several times we've come in front of the commission. We've talked about expanding the jail, have more room for the sheriff to work out there. Last commission, we did vote to approve the increased cost. However, we need to, this one is dealing with actually amending the contract. And so what's presented here is just the simple amendment to the contract, giving the contractor additional time to complete the building because we actually delayed him by not, um, accepting the bid right away. Pretty straightforward. Did I miss anything, Eric?
That sounds great.
Okay.
So with this, we ought to be able to break ground pretty soon on those, uh, getting rid of the mods out there. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution R-2018-2281, a resolution approving a work change request and proposed contract amount for the construction of the purgatory correction facility worker housing building.
I'll second that.
We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number six, consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2289, a resolution approving a First Amendment professional service contract with Marcus Faust, D.C., for assistance in the promotion of Washington County interests to the U.S. government.
I would speak to this one. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I had the pleasure, uh, with you with, uh, meeting Mr. Faust over a year ago. And, uh, at that time, we decided that we wished to engage his services in a contract. And we're working with City of St. George, the Water Conservancy District on issues that are very specific to the renewal of our Habitat Conservation Plan and our transportation needs in Washington County. And Mr. Faust has been extremely beneficial. In fact, as I've met regularly, uh, with Ed Robertson, the State BLM Director, our Regional BLM Director and other state and federal authorities, local partners. Every time it's been necessary, Mr. Faust has traveled from Washington, D.C. to attend those meetings. He has engaged in drafting legislation as we need it to come up where we need a little extra lift. We're trying to pursue an administrative approach as much as possible with the HCP renewal, but it's likely because of the resource management plan that we're having to deal with that we might need some intervention from Congress. And Mr. Faust has bicameral experience and a lot of experience in drafting that. And so this is an amendment to our contract to reflect the extra time, energy and effort that he has putting in, uh, for our Habitat Conservation Plan. So this amends it up by $25,000. And so I speak highly in support of this motion and would make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number seven, consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2290, a resolution appointing board members to the Washington County Planning Commission and Scott, our planning department.
So, um, we had terms of several members of the Planning Commission come up. This, their terms ended in January of this year. Um, we, uh, posted the openings and held interviews and interviewed quite a few, um, candidates that would have done an excellent job on the Planning Commission. Uh, what the proposal and resolution that's before you at this time, we had regular members, but we also last year had two alternate members. One of those alternates, because Brian Simonson relocated up north. So Kurt Owens, or sorry, Kurt moved up to regular member and we had John Walter as an alternate. So there, we're, I'm recommending that John Walter, he moved up, he's done an excellent job as an alternate on the Planning Commission, that he would be full-time member. Doug Solstead and Brandon Anderson, and the two alternates would be Shane Durant and Reed Skow.
Good. Mr. Chairman, uh, I will speak to this, uh, to support what Scott has says. I sat in on the interviews and although I did not write and score, I wanted that to be independent of mission input. I was very pleased with the quality and the caliber of the applicants that we had. They were outstanding, all of them. It made it very, very difficult, I'm sure, for Scott and his group to determine who they would recommend. But I would make a motion in support of John Walter, Doug Solstead, Brandon Anderson as members of the new Planning Commission with terms expiring January 31st, 2021, with Shane Durant and Reed Skow appointed as alternates with terms also to expire. appointed as alternates with terms also to expire on January thirty first, twenty twenty.
And I'll second that motion. And this is, you've had a good couple of crops of.
Yeah, we have.
People that are willing to serve on this board. So this is fantastic.
Been, been great. There's been times in the past that we've had to go recruiting and.
Yeah.
And last two years have been really good.
Top notch. So great.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item eight, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety one, a resolution ratifying the execution of an agreement between the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resource Conservation Services and Washington County to provide financial assistance for the Warner Draw Supplemental Watershed Plan Project, Ron Whitehead.
This is another agreement we have with N R C S who have supported us greatly for a decade now and and waterways and repairs and stuff. This is a little different one. This is doing some pre-mitigation type stuff. We're looking at the waterways and stuff. So that's why it's coming under a different funds for them. Warner Draw Watershed is the area that covers it. There are three areas that stink inside of that that will benefit from this plan.
Where's that located at?
The Warner Draw is the whole watershed that feeds into this area and there are three distinct projects that are covered under this. Three projects are Gools Wash, debris basin that's up above Hurricane. Warner disposal and pipeline, that's from the Warner disposal basin that sits just up above Stukey and the others that are out in the Washington fields. Only this one's right up in Warner Valley and drains down into them. And then the Virgin River mitigation irrigation improvements. That's for some of the drainage facilities down along the Virgin River. They're doing some improvements to those. Make sure they're adequately protected with soft patient type stuff. Sure, all the channels are open. So they'll. This is just the plan and the E A for it. Once that is done, then they will look at funding. Structure.
Very good. I've always said N R C S is my favorite federal agency because no regulatory powers, but they help out a lot. So. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we had adopt resolution R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety one, a resolution ratifying the execution of an agreement between the United States Department of Agriculture, Natural Resource Conservation Service and Washington County to provide financial assistance for the Warner Draw supplemental watershed project.
And I'll second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just might add that this is at no cost to the county whatsoever. Their supply is of one point seven million dollars to do these studies for us and the planning on it.
They've been great.
Great asset for us.
It's great.
Item nine, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety two. A resolution approving the execution of agreement between Washington County and Flinch, Flinch?
Flitch.
Flitch Creative Design Agency to provide an interactive website design and programming services for trails in Washington County. And Scott?
And just real quickly, I can go into more detail if you would like, but as part, as we met with all the representatives working on this trails committee and coming together on how we want to move forward, one of the big things that we wanted to do is we're looking at all the people going to Zion National Park and how do we spread them out? How do we let them know about all these other wonderful areas of our county? One of the things that was talked about is to create a website, a, that houses all of the trails and make it as easy as possible for both visitors and locals to find out all this information on the trails. We have Saint George, the Visit Saint George website, which is part of the tourism department. It's felt like we already had people coming to that site instead of creating another site and then trying to funnel people to that. What we decided to do and recommended was doing an R F P and getting proposals from different groups about developing what, because I'm not a website guy, what I'm calling a microsite or just built within the Visit Saint George website that would have all the G I S maps, the data. We want people to be able to find out whether the trail is an up and back or if it's a loop and you know, we don't want people from Germany coming out and heading out on a thirty mile trail in the West Desert with just a bottle like Dean has right there. Don't want to create more problems for search and rescue. So, you know, we're hoping that it's really informative. There were a lot of different groups that we ended up meeting with as part of this R F P. And there were a lot of really good qualified people and several different options that we could have gone with. And we felt like this was the best option. And so we presented it to the tourism board at their last meeting. They recommended approval of the funding for, for us to work with Flitch Development. And so I'll, I can go into more detail if you'd like.
So this, this is going to be built within the existing website. It's not necessarily an app.
Correct. What we're wanting to do is it'll be built within that website, but as part of it, what we discussed is we talked about whether we do an app or if we just make it mobile accessible. And so our goal is to make it so people don't have to download another app. We want them to be able to, everyone's, you know, whether they're driving down from the Wasatch Front or wherever, they have their mobile phone in their minivan looking to see what they're going to do. And so we want to, even in the remote areas that they'll be able to have, I believe it's called a G P X file, that will show them where they are on the trails and help them find out that information.
Super.
Hey, I would, you mentioned the Tourism Tax Advisory Board. I'd like to call them out as well. They are a group of non-paid, highly respected community citizens that review how these funds are spent, like the ones that we just approved on all that advertising. And so we're getting independent eyes from the hoteliers, the restaurateurs and others that pay that tax on how the county spends this. And so I really appreciate the work and time that they put into helping Washington County be a great place to recreate and your time and effort as well, Scott. I'd make a motion in support.
Thank you.
Of resolution twenty eighteen, twenty two ninety two. A resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and Flitch Creative Graphic Design Agency to provide interactive website designing and programming services for trails in Washington County.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Ten, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety three, a resolution approving the execution of agreement between M R W Design Associates Incorporated and Washington County to perform architectural services for the remodeling of the county boulevard office building.
Very good. I'd like to speak to this, Mr. Chairman. Um, I affectionately call this our facelift on our, our administrative building or what we call our boulevard building right here on, on Boulevard. That building, the, the roof leaks, but only when it rains. So it hasn't leaked very much this year, unfortunately. And as we started looking at, at wanting to fix the roof and the, the cost of that and some things we needed to do. And also we just, we really appreciate the fact that the entire third floor has almost no windows and has that mushroom as. So we just thought it was an opportunity for us to give that a little bit of a facelift. So this, this resolution is engaging with our architect to get all of the planning and designing done to give the, the boulevard building a facelift. So. So it will be a remodel of the exterior. We're going to leave the interior for future when we have an opportunity.
If that's your motion, I'll second.
Very good.
We have a motion and second. And for the audience, anybody that wants to come up and look at that rendering of the building, I'll just leave it up here. We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item eleven, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety four, resolution approving tourism advisory board recommendations for funding a bicycle skills park, Ivan's Fire Park Swimming Beach, Saint George Area Chamber Guide and the American Cornhole, American West Competition Sponsor. And I had to ask what cornhole is.
Yeah, please, but you know, I haven't heard of cornhole.
Apparently it's a growing thing and it's just bean bags that they throw in holes. That's all it is. But apparently they, they have an international, Brittany, you would know what it is more. Is it like an international organization or?
Interesting. So it's kind of like the horseshoeing, but with a beanbag.
Apparently when, and I asked, when they can't, when they, their shoulder goes out that they can't do the horseshoe because it weighs a little bit more, they go to the beanbag.
Oh.
You don't have to bring any special play in for that. Nice. Good.
That's great.
The other two is in, we're partnering with our cities. So Saint George City is doing the Bicycle Skill Park, which is right across the street from Snow Canyon High School. Ivan's Fire Park is just the Ivan's Reservoir that they've put some beaches in there and are trying to fix up the area. And then the Saint George Area Chamber Guide, that's a guy that of course, everybody should be familiar with, that they talk about our local businesses. And a lot of course, individuals come pick that up to look at restaurants and to hotels.
You know, one of the things I really like about these projects, Commissioner, and your leadership there is these not only have benefits for people coming to visit our area, but all of our residents here locally will benefit and be able to enjoy these parks as well. And so we really get a win-win with this. And by partnering with Ivan's and the City of Saint George, we're able to leverage these funds as well. Instead of buying more smaller projects, we can come up with really great projects that will benefit just all of our residents. I'm excited about it.
That a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion. Cheyenne, all these motions are going to be word for word in the minutes, right?
Yeah.
I, that is a motion in support of resolution two thousand eighteen, twenty two ninety four, a resolution approving tourism advisory board recommendations for funding bicycle skills parks, Ivan's Fire Park Swimming Beach, Saint George Area Chamber Guide and the American Cornhole Mountain West Competition.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, at least I thought about it. If I didn't verbalize it, I definitely want to support cornholing.
Was that a volunteer? Are you going to participate, Commissioner?
I think I am. That sounds kind of fun, actually. Maybe that's a sport I could get good at. So.
Item number twelve is consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety five, a resolution approving execution of agreement between Washington County and the town of Springdale regarding transferring of ownership of a parcel of real property and approving the execution of a quitclaim, the transferring ownership of a parcel of land. I'm Ethan.
Kim, how come you're always giving away valuable real estate that the county owns?
Before I get to that, I think we need to be cautious about making Ivan's Reservoir too popular. Kids at Slough School won't have any place to go and be secure in that if we make it too popular over there. I, that may be dating myself a bit.
Point well taken.
Okay. The, I think you have four resolutions here, items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, that are all concerning different cities with properties that the county has either owned or got ownership of through the tax sale. And we're trying to get that back to where it ought to be. In the first one, number twelve to Springdale, there's a little corner at the corner of Zion Park Boulevard and I think it's Amphitheater Drive. It's just, it's just the curve of the road essentially on one side, the north side. About four hundred square feet that we had ownership to for some reason. Let me talk about all four of those while I'm. So on thirteen, it's, it's two parcels to Washington City. One is the slope that runs along three hundred east in Washington between about four hundred south and about six hundred south. When they expanded that road a few years ago, they kind of cut that slope away so that stuff wouldn't roll down. But that is the county ownership and we really, I don't think have any need for that. And the other parcel is in Indian Oaks that we acquired in a tax sale. Again, it's just a curve of the, kind of the curve of the road probably left over from a an engineering for, as they surveyed and did those things. Yeah. Uh, number fourteen, it's a parcel to the Water Conservancy District. It's a parcel, again, we acquired in the tax sale that sits astride the Washington Canal right away, the easement for the canal. But we thought that was the best place for that, that to go. It's just due east of Nichols Peak, if you know where that is, kind of in the Silver Falls horse motel area over there. And the last one is in Enterprise. It's a roadway, a section of roadway of their five hundred east. Again, right in the middle of roadway, we acquired that in a tax sale. We're, we're kind of getting to the end of the ones that we're trying to, to give away. I've sent a list of several properties to the City of Saint George as well, and they're, they're taking a look at those and making sure that they want to take those. We always ask the city before we just send them that if they want those.
And generally, all of these have actually gone through the tax cell process, but because they're in a roadway and totally unusable.
Nobody's purchased.
Nobody purchases them. And I want to point that out.
Yeah, we've ended up with those. Or most of the, well, you can't say a roadway is not valuable, but it's not valuable to a person that wants to do something, something with it. So.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to combine all four of these and make it into one motion?
I think it is. Right, Eric?
Yep.
With that, I'd like to make a motion that we take the recommendations of our clerk auditor and accept these transfers, item eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen.
How about, I have items twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah.
Fifteen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second for four items, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
Am I looking at it out?
I think, I think.
Agenda?
Yeah, we have one.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
They demanded it.
Springdale, Washington.
I just barely approved the art council if we went to fifteen on my agenda.
Very good. Item fifteen, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety eight. A res, I'm sorry, I mean back up. Item sixteen, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety nine. A resolution designating the Art Council of Washington County as the county's local art agency and.
Okay, very quickly, I'll, I'll speak to this one. So, and I'll also defer to, to Eric. In the past, historically, we've had an arts council for, for several years and then then there was kind of a separation of the arts council from the county. And this is kind of coming back together in collaboration. This resolution will last for two years, correct? Then, um, so this brings existing art council back underneath the Washington.
Yeah. And Paula Bell is here. She and I were kind of talking beforehand. This designates them as the county's official art, local arts agency. She and I may follow up and see if there needs to be an additional designation to let them legally like use the county's tax I D number. I'm not sure that we will, but we'll, we'll follow up and you may hear back from us on that.
Does give that designation.
It gives that designation. It lets them apply for grants. The grant that, that they're looking to apply for is a the contract is a two-year thing. So this just fits with that.
No, it's, and what you're doing is totally consistent with what I call a general good purpose of the county. And so I support it totally.
Very good. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty two ninety one. Resolution designating the Arts Council of Washington County as the county's local art agency.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'm number seventeen, consideration of resolution number R dash two, two oh one eighteen dash twenty three zero zero, a resolution approving, adopting the updated Washington County Emergency Activation Plan.
And now I've got a question, Pete. Didn't we make a few changes to the, Pete's still here? Yeah. If you come up and speak to it, but didn't we look at and review the emergency operations plan as well as the activation plan? And are we doing just the activation plan now?
The basic operations plan was adopted in a couple of meetings ago. You adopted it by resolution. This is, this is the activation and security plan. And we have in that plan, there are separate individual plans for recovery and other things. Those are in the review process right now. Submitting those to you for review to, this deals with the activation of the Emergency Operations Center, how it fires up security that's necessary when it does and some basic stuff. Mostly just cleaning up language and changing a few assignments.
Thank you, Pete. Commissioners, I've had a chance to read and review the county emergency activation plan and the, and the updates that have gone into that. And I think that our emergency services director has done an outstanding job on both the planning and the response areas of his responsibility. I speak in support of two thousand eighteen, twenty three hundred. A resolution approving and adopting the updated Washington County Emergency Activation Plan.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Do you have a question for you, Eric? Did, we had a joint agreement with the other cities, cooperative joint, joint aid. Did we ever renew that?
I will. I, I think we did.
I think we did.
About six months ago, but I'll double check that.
All right, thanks. Item eighteen, consideration of. Item eighteen, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three oh one, a resolution approving a venue contract for the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park. Commissioner Iverson?
Okay, I'd like to speak to this. So as everyone should know or does know, we, the county owns um, uh, the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park, which is just a, a little ways down the road from the fairgrounds there. Uh, we've had it for several, about twenty years now. Um, the way the park is run is that the different ranges, whether it's a shotgun venue or, or the practical pistol or the practical or the rifle and pistol or the mountain man. Um, it is run by, by clubs that have uh, venue agreements with us. And we've been working on this venue contract um, with each one of these venues for quite a few months now. It's been quite a process going back and forth. And so the resolution that we have that we're going to vote on is, is approving those venue agreements that I, I feel we've done a pretty good job at hammering them out. There seems to be a little bit of concern, but I'm not sure that I understand what those concerns are from one or two of the venues. But in all reality, I, I feel that this is a, an agreement that, that meets everybody's needs. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this and that we set a date on when the clubs need to communicate back to the county if they're going to sign. I'd like that to be by next meeting, so fourteen days probably.
If um, to have it on the commission meeting, it should, I think, go on the fourteenth. If, if it's due on the fourteenth, then it can
I'm not sure if it needs to be on the commission meeting if
If we approve it today.
By next commission, okay.
Yeah, if we give them fourteen days, um. So I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three oh one, a resolution approving the venue contracts for the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park with
Due by the
Stipulation that
With the stipulation that they um, communicate either return it back to us or communicate whether they're going to sign it by, within fourteen days.
I'll second that.
A motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nineteen is Commissioner's report. I would just like to thank my wife for actually sitting through an entire commission meeting tonight.
That is
She's still here?
Really, really remarkable. Outlasted the Boy Scouts, so that's, that's great. Fantastic.
She's always asking me what I do at work.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I don't think my wife's ever
I know, yeah, she came for the swearing in.
That's true love, right around Valentine's to, to show that. So that's fantastic.
And I'd like to just make one comment that uh, legislature is in uh, and meeting right now. And so we appreciate the great job they're doing and we're spending a fair amount of our time. There are a lot of issues, it seems like every year that, that directly impact county. And unfortunately, sometimes I think they adversely impact county. And so we need to uh, be able to educate that our lawmakers from time to time and also thank them for what they're doing. But if, if you come in and we're gone on a Thursday or Friday, we're not taking off early, that, those are the days that we're spending up on the hill and uh, they're doing a great job.
And it really does make us admire their service because especially the legislators from down here who have to go up there and stay away from their families and serve, they do a great job, so.
All right. See no other items. We stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.